Commission meeting to order. Welcome to the December 9, 2025 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform or be considered by the Planning Commission and may cause the chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any matter tonight. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call on Commissioner Bush for pledging allegiance.
You got it.
Hands over your hearts, ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Pellman is absent. Vice Chair Bush.
Here.
Chair Thienis.
Here.
Commissioner Babinow.
Here.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Palmer.
Here.
And Commissioner Goldberg is also absent. We have a quorum.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers for items not on the agenda?
We have no one signed up to speak for items that are not on the agenda.
Okey dokey. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of conditional use permit number 24-016 and coastal development permit 24-001, the Tran residence on Carousel. Planning Commissioners, please state your disclosures regarding this item. We'll start at my right.
I spoke to Councilwoman Vandermark and Brett Bush and Brian Thienis.
I talked with Planning Commissioner Dominic McGee and Councilman Chad Williams.
Okay. And I spoke with Commissioner McGee and Commissioner Pellman and Mayor Burns at the time, former Mayor Burns, Mayor McKeon, and Councilman Vandermark.
I spoke with Councilperson Pat Burns and Mayor Casey McKeon and two unnamed residents.
Okay, staff, may we please have a report?
Yes, Marco Cuevas, associate planner, will be giving the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And Planning Commissioners, tonight for your consideration, we do have the appeal of the zoning administrator's approval of condition use permit number 24016 and coastal development permit 24-11. That is the Tran residence. The project site, it's, the project is located at 16741 Carousel Lane. It is a 5,289 square foot lot. The neighborhood consists of a mix of single, two, and three-story homes, and the general plan and zoning designation is RL for residential low density. And as the slide shows, the project site is located here with the yellow arrow. And it's a, within Humboldt Island waterfront lot. So, the project request is to demolish the existing two-story residence, which is about, the current residence is about 5,070 square feet, and construct a new 5,671 square foot three-story, single-family residence at a height of 34 feet and 1 inch with a three-car garage. So, the image to your left is the site plan showing the location, of course, of the garage up front, but also of how the addition will be, or the new construction would be developed onto the site. The image to your right is the current view of the property as it exists today. So, with our ZA action, the zoning administrator held a public hearing on October 15, 2025 to consider the proposed project. The applicant spoke on behalf of the project, and there were no speakers in opposition to the project. Staff recommended approval citing that the project was in compliance with all but one of the development standards for the residential low-density zone. In order to attain full compliance, the third-floor habitable area will need to be revised to reach the second-story top plate and is noted as condition 1A. The project was also conditioned to limit the building height at 230 feet and is noted in condition 1B. The ZA considered the compatibility and variety of one-to-three-story homes with diverse architectural styles and also considered multiple homes approved with heights ranging from 25 feet to 35 feet within the neighborhood and vicinity, and determined that limiting the project to a maximum height of 30 feet would be more consistent with development with adjacent residences and recently-approved homes in the Huntington Harbor. Thus, the ZA approved the project with the suggested findings and modified conditions So, on October 27, 2025, following the ZA's action, the project was appealed by Jaclyn Lang on behalf of the property owner, David Tran, citing that condition 1B limiting the maximum height of the structure to not exceed 30 feet in height was arbitrary and unsupported. Although the proposed residence will be, residents will be consistent with development within the area, the ZA approval with regard to this height was based on the compatibility of one-to-three-story homes within the area with heights ranging from 25 to 35 feet in height, and determined that limiting the project to a maximum height of 30 feet would be more consistent with development with adjacent residences and recently-approved homes in Huntington Harbor. All new development with three stories or heights greater than 30 feet are subject to a conditional use permit review, and approvals are discretionary. The third-floor space, as conditioned, is designed within the confines of the second-floor roof volume, which facilitates the structure's resemblance to a two-story home. The third-floor balcony deck is set back five feet from the building exterior and is oriented towards the channel. The building height, as conditioned, and appearance of a two-story home are similar to the proportion and scale of two- and three-story homes within the area. On this slide, we have the subject property with the star actually noted here on the map, and this is just to be representative of the types of development within the Humboldt Island. So, the red dots represent CUPs and CDPs that were approved for three-story habitable and/or decks over 30 feet, and like I said, those are represented by the red dots. The green dots are CDPs that do not exceed 30 feet in height. So, those are typically like two-story residences, but you could see where they're located as well within the green dots. And the blue dots are, is one, is a project that is actually adjacent to the subject property that was allowed with just a building permit back when the code allowed for such developments. Okay, in this slide, we have the adjacent properties. The property to the left at 16752 Wanderer Lane has a height of 33 feet. That's measured from the finished floor to the top of the rails. The neighboring property to the right at 167 Carousel Lane is 30 feet high, and you can see how it looks from the street level based on this slide. Okay, and this next slide is also representative of the types of development that are within close proximity of the subject property. So, you can see, starting from the top left, 16591 Carousel Lane, that's built at 35 feet. That has a third floor. The following property, 16681 Carousel Lane, is built to 31 feet, six inches. That is actually a two-story property. 16541 Carousel Lane is built to 34 feet. That's also a two-story property. The bottom two photos represent developments that are, that do not exceed 30 feet. 16732 Wanderer Lane is built to 29 feet, and that's a two-story property. And 16711 Carousel Lane built to 30, that's a 30-foot structure, and that actually has three stories. So, as you can see, the types of development within, like, the close proximity to the subject property, they're diverse in architectural styles, but also diverse in heights as well. For this next slide, as we previously mentioned, the proposed project complies with the provisions of the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, including setbacks, building height, minimum landscape, privacy standards, and parking requirements as demonstrated in the table provided. Single-family residences proposed over 30 feet in height or with any habitable living space above the second floor, including roof loft decks, are subject to approval of a conditional use permit by the zoning administrator. Within the RL zoning designation, residential subjects that do not include improvements above the second floor are not subject to a CUP and do not need a public hearing and may proceed directly to the building permit process. As detailed in the table above, the proposed single-family dwelling complies with minimum residential low-density development standards, but is subject to condition use permit approval due to the proposed third floor and height. Coastal development permit is required for all new construction on the waterfront. As you can see, within the table, we have what the required development standards are, and to the left, we have, on this column, we have the proposed standards. You could see that the subject property either meets or exceeds the basic designations of what's required for that zoning district. For elevations, the proposed three-story residence, as conditioned, will conform with the city zoning ordinance. And as you can see in these elevations, the east elevation is what you would see from the streets, the west elevation is what you would see from the harbor, and the south and north elevations would represent the sides. So, you could see from the profiles that the house does resemble a two-story residence from the sides, but of course, when you get to the view from the waterfront, that's where you would see the resemblance to a third story. And of course, the third story is set back from the front, or from the building structure is set back five feet. So, in summary, the planning commission may either uphold the zoning administrator's decision with or without modifications, or take an alternative action. So, the zoning administrative action is to find the proposed project categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15303, class 3, and approve CUP number 24061, 016, and CDP 24-11 with suggested findings and conditions of approval, essentially at the height of 30 feet. Or the alternative action is to find a proposed project categorically exempt under the same SEQA section, class 3, and approve CUP number 24-016 and CDP 24-11 with modified findings and conditions of approval at a height of 34 feet, 1 inch, essentially the applicant's request, or continue the CUP and CDP item and direct staff accordingly. So, with that, I conclude my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? We'd like to start with Commissioner Palmer. You had a question?
I have a question, but it might, I have a question, but it might need to go to the With 1B, if we were to approve that, that says it's, I guess, 34 feet, 1 inch. I personally don't care for anything over 30 feet, but we do have some precedent set. So, how much of a guarantee is there that there will be nothing, and I mean nothing, no chimneys, no wires, no drones, no helicopter landing pads, no shade cloths above the 34 1-inch height? Because that seems to be what's happening, is people get a deck, and then they put things up on the deck, and then there's just more and more stuff at higher, higher heights. So, that would be my question.
So, the code does allow heights up to 35 feet with approval of a conditional use permit. So, I think there's very few exceptions to that, with the exception of chimneys and elevators and things of that nature, but that would be the only thing, so.
And that's my question. Are there chimneys and elevators above the height that's recommended in 1B?
Can we pull the elevations back up? Let's leave the building elevations on the screen.
I'd like to say that I think you have to be two feet above the roof line, 10 feet away, from the building's standpoint, but, oh, sorry about that. I believe if the building code's still the same, the chimney where it goes past the third floor has to be two feet above the roof line, 10 feet away. That used to be it. So, whatever that designation is, 10 feet away approximately, I would, whatever that would be, if you guys can figure that out.
If it's 10 feet away on a lower slope of the roof, it wouldn't go higher than the 34 1 or 35 feet. But if it is measured from 35 feet, then you could go up to, what, 37 feet? That's my question. I'd like to see a hard, I'd like to see a hard stop at 35, absolutely, so.
So, just, just for the sake of the conversation, because we're not here for the building, obviously, but I understand what you're saying. It's not going to go past the peak of the roof line at the top. It'll be, it'll be short of that at 10 feet away, if that makes sense. This is questions for staff, though, please.
So, if I may add to that, so, as I mentioned, the code does allow for, I guess, exceptions to that height limit, but only certain exceptions. A chimney would be one of them, and like, say, like maybe an elevator, and I believe it allows, I'm going to say, a maximum of 10 feet above that, but no more than that. So, the height limit that the code requires of 35 feet is a hard 35 feet, as I said, with approval of a conditional use permit, but it's up to the roof, the tip of the rooftop. So, nothing else would be allowed above that.
Is that chimney dimensioned?
Thank you.
I mean, it does not look like it goes above the peak of the roof. If it does, it might be a half a foot.
Thank you.
Let me, let me reference my plans to see if there's a dimension for that actual chimney So, the plans reference on the elevations that the, the top of the chimney would be nine inches above the tip of the highest point of the roof. So, at, let's see, at, they're requesting 34 1-inch, so at nine inches above that, 34, 34 feet, 10 inches.
And basically, when you go through the zoning administrator, you're, you're getting approval of these conceptual plans. The plant, the construction drawings have to match the conceptual drawings, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Asked and answered, thank you.
Commissioner Bush?
You have the question?
Vice Chair Bush?
So, I just want to confirm that the zoning code allows for 35 feet, right?
That is correct.
Right. So, 57% of these projects, it looked like there was 21 overall, 57% of them are over the 30-foot mark. So, just kind of curious, if it's not arbitrary, how would you define it?
So, you know, all the plans are, that are over 30 feet, you know, it is, you know, subject to, well, discretionary, first of all, but, you know, they are subject to the plans and what they're developing. So, if I understand your question, you're, you're asking if, you know, how are projects, you know, built above the 35, or the 30-foot?
Well, how did you come to the conclusion of 30 feet, considering 35? They're asking for 34 1, 35's the top, you're at 30. So, to me, I'm just wondering what your method was, because it's, to me, it seems arbitrary. I'm not doing the plan check.
Right. So, the 30-foot height limit was essentially looking at more recently-developed property, and also it looked at the most, like, adjacent properties. So, that's how essentially, you know, comparably how 30 feet was, was derived. But once again, that was, you know, the zoning administrator's decision, and as I said, it's discretionary. So, they, they exercise a fair amount of discretion when evaluating these projects.
And Vice Chair, can I jump in?
And Vice Chair, can I jump in there? And you guys are selected for your own personal expertise, and this is a Novo hearing. So while you can consider what the zoning administrator did, you really should be looking at the facts themselves and coming to your own conclusions. And, yeah.
Commissioner Pellman, any questions?
I have more of a comment. I basically, I'm sorry that I'm late. There was a huge accident on Edwards Hill, and so that's why my delay in getting to the meeting. I basically am still uncomfortable with the seawall situation. Yeah. And so I had asked the mayor if he would provide a planning, a study session on the seawall, and basically, he said he would. So hopefully, that comes through and solves the problem for me. Thank you.
Commissioner McGee?
Yeah, I was, wanted to ask about the, what seems to be arbitrary decision to make this 30 feet also. So looking at the facts and using maybe Occam's razor as a guide, it is kind of an arbitrary decision. I'd come at that conclusion anyway. So that's the only statement I want to make, why this particular, why this particular project was capped at 30 when there's numerous others that are beyond that. That was it, really.
Okay. All right. With no further questions, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight?
We have three speakers signed up to speak. Jaclyn Lang, David Tran, and Perry Clitherow. Please come down to either mic lineup and make sure you state your name prior to speaking. Thank you.
...to build their home up to the 34 feet one inch as requested. As some of you have mentioned, other homes in the area have been granted that same tolerance. And if I were a property owner, I'd feel real, real bad if my neighbors got something and then all of a sudden, I was told no. So have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jaclyn Lang. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, David and Kimberly Tran. They're here present tonight. So a little background about them, you know, we're immigrants from Vietnam. They've lived their American dream here since 1980, worked and lived in HB for over 30 years. They love Huntington Beach. They moved to the harbor in 2017 with the intention to rebuild the house, because it was, you know, not, it was not new. It was the original condition. So I've helped them since 2017 to work with one of the top architects and home builders in the area who are very familiar with the Huntington Harbor area. My mom, Kimberly, loves the harbor. She's out there almost every day. She loves to keep the harbor clean. So if you see someone on a paddleboard, she's, she's just loves the area, and she doesn't want to move anywhere else. They want this to be their forever home. I also love the area, so I also live near, I bought a home nearby about a year ago as well in the harbor. So I come to visit them often, because, and my brother is also living in Huntington Beach. So we finalized the plans last year and submitted it in June of 2024. And then in October, just waiting for the plans to get approved, October of this year, I was informed that our plans may not get approved because of the height. So that was kind of a surprise to us, because we were hoping to get this built, because as soon as possible, because my parents really want to get their home built. And I assure you, we had our architects look at the city codes and make sure that the codes were going to be compliant, because we didn't want any delays. So as far as compliance, you know, everything except for condition 1A and 1B were compliant. Setbacks, massing, parking, everything is met. The third story is really, you know, they're on the main channel. They want to enjoy, they love the views of the harbor. That's the reason we waited and purchased this property, the right time to purchase, and, you know, waited so long to get this plan approved. The third story is really just like a TV room for them to have, so when the grandkids come over, they can be up there watching TV while everybody else is downstairs. Neighborhood compatibility, well, just to show you some of the views from the water, I think you can tell with our new plans, we would be compatible. I don't think that it would, like, right now, I feel we're not compatible, because we're, you know, two stories in between some of these really beautiful homes. And really, we want to build a beautiful home to make the area, improve the area. So that's precedent. So I just did some research about the CUPs in the area, and, you know, these are just some of the facts that I came to find, is also found out, like, there was one permit that was submitted after ours for a very similar size and higher height than ours that got approved, and they submitted their plans like a month after ours. So I, you know, that was really heartbreaking. I, you know, just, we went and talked to neighbors about our project. I don't think, you know, we got some, I have some more support letters from them that they signed, and I don't, again, we're very, you know, we try to respect, you know, all of the conditions that... And then as far as design, I mean, I left, we just told our architect to, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. If you could just please wrap it up. You're, you're...
Just a few more slides. But, yeah, the design, you know, everything would be compliant or, you know, in compliance, and we're just asking for fairness in consideration for our plans. We tried to see if, you know, it would work, but I just, it just looks really odd. My parents just don't love the design if we have to, like, you know, reduce the height. It just would make everything feel so, you know, a lot like they have now, what the style of the home is now. So they just, again, so I'm just asking for consideration of the 34-feet height, and we'll just make sure everything is compliant with the CD and building codes. So thank you so much for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Tran, did you wish to speak?
My name is David Tran, and my wife, Kimberly Tran. We've been, living in Orange County since 1982, including the 20, 23 years in Huntington So we love Orange County special in Huntington Beach, so that's why we, we lived in here for a long time. And we first opened our business in Huntington Beach, first in 2010, 2002. So we, we all family working and working hard. I have two children, and they have their own, their own home. And even only two of us, my wife and I, but still, the reason that I want to build the large home, because we both 74 now, and so I don't go out a lot like before. So I have three, two children and three grandchildren. I want to have more room for them whenever they come to visit us. That's the reason that we want to build a big home. And we're going to continue to live in this house. We love this house, or we're going, I think we're going to die in this house. So, see.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something, maybe. May I make a...
Hold on, hold on. Are there any other speakers?
There aren't other speakers.
Okay. We will go ahead and close the public hearing. And planning commissioners, we will now deliberate this idea, this item. Commissioner McGee?
Yeah, this, this may be just a personal thing for me to say, but this kind of thing annoys me. Basically, we're putting arbitrary conditions on somebody's dream home. People come here from all over the world, escaping hellholes, and make this place better, and I love this. I actually like this project. So I just think it's just us being here, the additional expense they've had through revised architectural designs, through appealing this thing, actually grates me. I just want to put that out there. We're actually blessed and fortunate to have people like this here. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Palmer?
I would agree with your assessment about a wonderful family home, a good project, attention to detail, and working with the community. However, I don't agree that rubber stamping every project that comes through is an absence of being arbitrary. So we're here to make decisions, and some of the things that have been approved, some people don't approve of. So it depends on who's sitting at the desk, and what the conditions are, and what the modifications are. So I appreciate that these, this family has been patient and looked at their design again. I'm sorry if it was a delay, but I agree with you. They're a wonderful addition to our community, and they've tried to build a beautiful family home. Thank you.
Vice Chair Bush?
So, you know, we've been around this block. I think this is at least the third time for us as a team, right? In doing the research on this back in the day when they started doing this change, I don't know if it was 1990, 91, or when it was, but in my research, if I'm wrong, and I don't mind being corrected, the community in Huntington Harbor came together with city staff, and they formed this code that we have now. So when we're sitting here, I, I, I think it's just a little pompous for us to sit here and change what was really well-done, like in an ad hoc fashion. And now we're going to come and we're going to have the scepter, if you would, and we're going to rule on these people doing these things. I just don't think it's appropriate. I think that the, the community spoke on this before. I think it was well-done, well-researched, and here we sit as kings and queens on the throne, and we're going to change what was a very, I thought, thorough process. Because in going back, I wanted to make sure I was being responsible for what my duties are when I'm sitting in this chair, from a deficit, because I don't have all the historical background. But in researching it and trying to be relevant, I think we become irrelevant if we don't think about the history. And, and I think it's kind of for me, sophomoric, to be that pompous and arrogant when these people, this man just, just stopped talking, short of probably getting more emotional, because this is his dream home. We are at 35 feet, right? That's what the zoning code allows for. Again, if it was 30 feet, we're all going to be in agreement on that, if that's what the code is, if that's what the zoning code is. But as far as I know, the zoning code allows for 35 feet. They're under that. 57% of those in that nearby map that we had were 30-plus feet. So I don't sit, sound to be anything but arbitrary going in that direction. I think that in the scheme of things, I'm a low-density guy, but I'm not past somebody's dream, because it's a single-family dwelling. And as far as the seawall goes, you know, that can only help, what you're saying. I like the idea, but again, we're just here to approve what's in front of us. So that's, I said a lot, but I, I'm probably going to sleep good tonight.
Commissioner Pellman?
Can I respond to that?
Okay.
Briefly.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pellman.
I agree with everything you just said. My problem was with making a generalization about arbitrary decisions on this commission. I don't think they are arbitrary. I think each project comes with concerns. If something gets appealed, it's up to us to look at what that appeal is, and it looks to me like they've addressed everything. But normally, there are CUPs, and we are, it is part of our duty to look at those and find out if we think that we should approve those, those divergent requests. So yes, this is a beautiful project. I was just taking exception to the generalization that it seems like decisions here are arbitrary.
I would just like to say, if this, my mic's not working.
It's on purpose.
Yeah. As far, as far as I know, the fact that it is the third story, it has to come to the planning commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it has to come here when it's, no, it's not correct.
No, it came to planning commission on appeal.
No, no, I understand that, but had it not been appealed, would the zoning, the zoning administrator, would it, would it had to have come here for approval for a third floor, or no?
No.
Oh, okay, good. Well, I see I'm continuing to learn.
Commissioner Pellman? Commissioner Pellman, do you have something? Do you have a comment?
No, I have no comments.
Okay. Marco, can we pull the building elevations back up? And while you're doing that, you know, Huntington Beach didn't invent this process. If you go to the City La Habra Heights, you actually have to build a house with PVC pipes or two-by-fours. Monterey, you have to build your house and, you know, form an outline of it so the public can comment on it and say, okay, here's this house that's going to be built. And so if you exceed 30 feet, if you go between 30 and 35 feet, or you have a third story, you need a conditional use permit. And for me, I believe this house is, is the perfect example of what the code intended. There was a house here that was 30 feet tall and three stories, and it was just a straight-up box that was huge. And to me, that house appeared as if the intent was only to make that house as large as you possibly could, and not a nice, beautiful, custom home like this. So I didn't think that was really an appropriate house, but it got through, it got through city council, and it ultimately got approved. So for me, I would appreciate if, if all third-story homes had the five-and-12 roof pitch, so it doesn't have that flat, funky-looking, commercial, generic look to it.
Institutional.
Yeah, and so to me, this is exactly what the Yeah, and, and so to me, this is exactly what the picture in the code looks like, you know, that's, the balcony on the third story is kind of like a giant dormer, but you still have, it's still all contained in the roof line. To me, this is exactly what I think the intent of the code should have, should, should be. I think this is a great project. And just to clarify, though, we call the house, in the presentation, that it was 5,600 feet or so, but I think the living area, isn't that more like 4,600 square feet?
You mean, short of garage?
Yeah, that included the garage, so this is a 4,600-square-foot house. And, you know, just, just, you know, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the Brightwater Development, we have just two-story homes, but they're all 35 feet tall. That, that's our specific plan allows for a 35-foot-tall home, because we've got nice roof pitches, and the difference between the 30-foot-tall and the 35 is that the 35 is actually less intrusive to your neighbor, because the, the height of the building is in the middle of the, of the lot. It's not straight up. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of our alternate motion to approve the, or to approve the project with the modification to the 34-foot, 1-inch height.
So can we make a motion?
I would like to, if we're.
Make sure you read that.
Exactly. We'd like to make a motion to approve this project with the alternate action, with the alternate actions, A and B, applicant's request, if that's okay.
So we're picking A, alternative action, A and B?
That's right.
And I'll second it. Can we have a vote?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not treading on that one.
Do you all see the vote screen? Okay. All right, we have five ayes. Commissioner Pellman, no. Commissioner Goldberg is absent. Motion carries.
Beautiful.
The planning commission's action is final unless an appeal is filed to the city council within 10 days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal and the fee, and shall be filed with the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Okay, so we have nothing on the consent calendar, we have nothing on the non-public hearing items. Next on the agenda are the planning items. Staff, can we please have a report?
Yes, yeah, we currently don't have any items for December 23rd. If that holds true, we will officially cancel it by posting a notice of cancellation the week prior.
Okay. All right, before we close for the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? We'll start on my right with Commissioner McGee.
Negative.
Commissioner Pellman?
Nope.
Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and see you back hopefully next year.
And I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season as well.
Same to me, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
I'd like to repeat that wish. Everybody, staff, visitors, and commission, please have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and if I don't see you before, I'll see you next year.
Oh, no, Merry Christmas. Of course. All right, that's the last item on the agenda. We hereby adjourn to our next planning commission meeting, which should be, or may or may not be, Tuesday, December 23rd, 2025. Thank you.